Okay, good morning. How's everybody doing today? Today is Tuesday, July 18th, 2023. That's a regular meeting of the Kings County Board of Supervisors. Madam Court, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Here.
Richard Valli is absent. Doug Verboon, Rusty Robinson, Richard Fagundes.
Here.
Okay, we have four members present, ready to conduct business today. At this time, we introduce Pastor Tyler Jones from Conia Church for our invocation. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. Second Thessalonians 3 verses 16, it says, "Now may the Lord of peace himself give you peace at all times and in every way the Lord be with all of you." If we can bow our heads for prayer. Father, we just thank you for your peace this morning. I pray over this meeting, I pray over every representative here that they would just have the peace that is rooted in you, Lord, and that in every decision, in every process and system that is spoken of this morning, I pray that you would just give them peace to be able to make decisions well for the sake of our county. And we just thank you and we honor you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. We have a special guest in the audience tonight from Sacramento. Graham Nos, Graham, will you lead us in the flag salute?
Sure, I'd be delighted to. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. At this time, we're going to go into employee recognition and we're going to go to Kerry Martinez.
Yes, good morning, board members. So each year, the California State Association of Counties, CSAC, recognizes innovative programs developed and implemented by the California's 58 counties. For the 2022 award year, Kings County submitted three projects for nomination. One was the Jail Early Access Stabilization Services Ease administered by our jail provider, WellPath. CSAC awarded the Jail Ease program as one of the winners for the Rural Administration, Justice, and Public Safety category. I'm thrilled to introduce Graham and Chastity, CEO of CSAC and Chief Operating Officer from CSAC, who are here to say a few things. I will hand it over now to Graham and welcome to Kings County.
Good morning. It's a great opportunity to be right here in the heart of California. Graham Canaus, I am the CEO of the California State Association of Counties, which means that I have the great opportunity to represent the five members of your board and the other 291 supervisors in the state of California. CSAC's been around for 128 years, and in every one of those years, we have represented every single county up in Sacramento and also in DC. So we are your organization and do everything we can to ensure that you can lift up your community and meet your local priorities. I'm thrilled that Chastity Benson, our Chief Operating Officer, is with me this morning and I want to talk a little bit about what we're doing on your behalf and then we will shift and talk about the innovation, the innovation award that we are presenting today. First, Supervisor Verboon, I want to thank you for your longtime connection and engagement with us. You have had multiple tours on our Board of Directors and have always been a strong voice for this county on behalf of your colleagues, so really.
I had color in my hair when I started.
What's that?
I had color in my hair when I started.
I actually had hair, so there you go.
Sorry about that.
Two things may or may not be related, but we'll work through that. At our core, we are an advocacy organization, so trying to bring the voice of all California's 58 counties to Sacramento and to DC. And so on that, we certainly worked through a number of different priorities and you have been immersed in some of the things that are at the top of our list. You've actually helped put them at the top of our list that include water, all things related to water, which is both on the there isn't enough water side and it's on wait, there's too much water and insufficient storage through all of that. And so I want to thank this board for pushing on that particular issue. We certainly have also been heavily immersed in homelessness and have created the first comprehensive plan to address homelessness in the state of California and are pushing to move that forward in a way that empowers local communities to take control and have the authority, the resources, and the flexibility to do it in a way that makes sense. And that's different in Kings than it is in Alpine, in LA, and San Diego, and it's different because it should be. Your community is different and what you need is different and we want to recognize this part of that. Ultimately, in all the things that we pursue, our strength is about being together and unifying with one voice. Another area that is really important to the CSAC board is around economic opportunity locally and empowering communities to really make progress and have opportunities for the members that reside here. Ultimately, we do have 128 years of history. That is a very, very long time. We've been in the same building most of that time. And in addition to our advocacy, there are a couple of other areas that are really important. One is, and actually you are the poster child of it, through our finance corporates, our business arm, we have the Easy Smart Pay program. And actually, it was in this county during the pandemic that the Easy Smart Pay program platform was put in place. That is a way for your taxpayers to pay their property taxes remotely and to do so with the lowest fees possible in your community. And so that program, you have helped put that program on the map here in California. Through our California Counties Foundation, which is our 501(c)(3), we have a couple of different program areas that are really important. One is, we operate the National Model for County Leadership and Policy Development and a number of leaders here in your county, across your departments, in your CAO's office, have certainly participated in that and contributed back to it as well. We also now have something that is called the CSAC Grants Initiative, which is about partnering with counties to pursue available federal dollars and ensure that your community gets its fair share. There is a lot of money that has been made available through the Infrastructure and Investment Act, through ARPA, through the Inflation Reduction Act, all the dollars that are in DC. It is incredibly important that each community receives its fair share and it's not conditioned on you having massive capacity internally as a smaller county. And so we want to partner with counties related to that and have identified and struck an agreement for discounted services through a firm that specializes in those grants. So that is in place. Ultimately, today, we get to talk about innovation and our Challenge Award Program, which has been in place for a number of years. And we get to talk about it relative to a program that is very politically sensitive, incredibly important in the incompetent-to-stand-trial area, is a critical part of the local criminal justice system and is in a place of flux at the state level where innovation becomes ever more important to ensure that your community is as safe as possible as we move through this. And so I'm going to hand it over to Chastity to walk through the specifics related to this program and then we will celebrate. Chastity.
Thank you, Graham. I'd be remiss if I didn't also take an opportunity to say thank you for having me here today. I've learned a lot from you all. I had the privilege of working with Christine Olivera on the San Juanquin Valley Regional Association of Counties Conference last year. She did a wonderful job and I had an opportunity to learn more from Supervisor Nevs and Supervisor Verboon about some of the challenges that you all are facing here in the valley and how CSAC can help in various ways. I've also had the opportunity to work with and watch your CAO here through her leadership journey. She too is a graduate of the CSAC Institute, also a graduate of the NACO Professional Development Academy, and it's just been a wonderful opportunity to learn more from her about some of the issues that are here in the valley. And finally, I'd like to say, you know, to Supervisor Robinson, it's been a pleasure to getting to know you through the new Supervisors Institute over the last year or so. But I am here today to present the Challenge Award. CSAC is a purpose-driven association and this board is a part of our foundation and our strength. Speaking of strength, I am too pleased to be here today to recognize Kings County for the innovative program called Early Access and Stabilization Services Program. This program grew out of the many other challenges facing counties today. The complexity of operating county jails in a time where state prisoners, local offenders, people with complex behavioral health issues are all the county's responsibility. Kings County worked with their local jail healthcare provider and the state to increase a real, sorry, to create a real-time treatment program for inmates who have been declared incompetent to stand trial by a judge. Folks who are declared incompetent to stand trial used to be transferred to a state hospital to be restored to competency. They could participate in their legal proceedings. While the state hospitals are overwhelmed and individuals deemed incompetent would often languish in county jail for months, even years. Kings County has an average of 14 to 20 individuals declared incompetent in waiting for a state bed. So the county took its jail-based competency treatment program a step further and created the Early Access and Stabilization Services Program. Working with the jail medical provider, WellPath Health, the county now offers comprehensive restoration services and treatment much sooner. The program incorporates psychiatry and medication management, psychological testing and evaluation, and mental health treatment. The county funds a nurse on seven days a week and each inmate meets more mental health services at least three times a week. Since it began in mid-2022, the Early Access and Stabilization Program has already restored an inmate to competency, diverted them from state hospital, and saving both the county and the state thousands of dollars. Also, that inmate was then tried for their offenses, ensuring that justice was being served as well. The program can't always restore an inmate to competency and those who don't make progress are still referred to state services. But now the county enrolls all inmates deemed incompetent to stand trial within 48 hours of the court's designation. This is an incredible innovation for a complex problem and Kings County progress is replicable by other counties. It is for these reasons that our judging panel selected Kings County Early Access and Stabilization Program for one of the 18 Challenge Awards given in 2022. We had nearly 300 entries, so Kings County truly rose to the top. I am pleased to recognize Keys County for the 2022 Challenge Award for the Early Access and Stabilization Program. Congratulations to the county, the sheriff, WellPath Health, and the folks who do this important work every day to ensure that justice is served. Thank you.
Thank you, Chastity. I wanted to give this opportunity to open up to the board if they had any comments and then bring the group up for a photo.
Any comments, any questions? Well, thank you.
We could have WellPath, Sheriff's Office, Chastity, the board all join us to the well, please.
Mr. Chair, as folks are walking up, just to reference, programs like this are so incredibly innovative and important to your community because they recognize the expertise that counties have, but also the importance of public-private partnerships. Both things are so incredibly important and were it not for that, this program and many others like it would not exist. And so huge congratulations to this board because you set the tone of leadership and innovation and this incredible team right here.
You only got one plaque, we needed a plaque for everybody. Have to have a little mini one, huh? Couple of mini ones, please. I'll say Kings County. One more right here, please.
Good job.
Awesome. Congratulations. So Graham, did I hear you right? 300 applicants and only 18 were given awards? So that's a big deal.
That's correct.
And Kings County, 153,000 population. We competed against larger counties that have more access to the funds than we do. So I want to thank our county and our staff for putting up with our actions and proving us that you can do the job. So thank you, thank you, CSAC.
Absolutely, congratulations.
Thank you. And we also have, I think we're going to apply for a challenge award for our new, we have an old building that was built in the early 1900s. We just remodeled it, our HSA staff and our behavioral health staff in there for juveniles. And it's an old hospital, morgue, that's been abandoned for years. We just went into the groundbreaking, not groundbreaking, but a ribbon-cutting in August 22nd, right? 27th, 22nd?
The 30th.
30th, that's close. And if you leave our county, it'd be the big old building on the left with the white, with the blue shutters and the red roof, beautiful building. And it was sat empty for years. We were able to refurbish it and make it a two-story into a three-story. So it's full today, so look forward to that.
We definitely look forward to it and the timing is perfect because our Challenge Award Program for this year just opened up. And so we look forward to that and any other applications from Kings County so that we can look at additional innovation coming from here.
Very good, thank you. Thank you for coming down. Okay, we'll move on now to unscheduled appearances. Any person may directly address the board at this time on any item on the agenda or any other items of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. We'll allow two minutes at this time.
I have no written correspondence, but the first speaker is Richard Tipton.
Come on, Richard.
Morning, board. Richard Tipton, I live here in Kings County. I've been here almost 70 years, here another couple of weeks. I'm here to discuss, talk about something that's not on your agenda, the homelessness. We haven't got rid of, we're never going to get rid of it, but we can deal with it like we're trying to. The issue I have is where we want to build the new homeless facilities at the old COS facility that they had out there. I really believe that's a bad spot, especially with the new four-story hotel going in there and the car dealerships. I think we have better places to put these people. They need help. I'm not saying we can't help them or we should help them. I just think that's a bad spot to do it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Emil Shagan.
Good morning.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Emil Shagan. I live in Visalia, but I'm the developer of that hotel just west of the Hyundai dealership. It's a four-story, 82 rooms, Fairfield Inn, first Marriott product in Kings County. We just found out about this project yesterday at about 4:00 PM. This location where they're trying to put this facility has no services and no support near it. We are concerned for our employees and our staff as well, for all the homeless issues that were created. This is a tough economic environment and to put a facility that's going to hurt us will make it even more difficult. I understand the concept of not in my backyard, but this is not a location for that. Look at San Francisco and see what issues they have. Three large hotels are closing because of the homeless issues that they have there. This is more of a mental issue, mental condition issue, and also some poverty. So please, we need your support in not supporting this project there.
Thank you. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kimber Regan.
Good morning, Kimber.
I'm a resident of Hanford, have been a resident of Hanford since 1969. I know most of you people that are here and I know most of the people that are probably here. And I feel like we need to take and fight on and make choices that are going to affect our future for our kids and our grandkids. And by taking and making choices that decide how our future happens is instrumental in making Hanford a better city for our future. The hotel that they're building out there, I feel like if that homeless shelter does go through and if you guys do support it and it does happen, it's a situation that's going to be destroying future businesses or developments in Hanford because it's a bad choice. Whenever you drive down the freeway, you will be able to see the homeless thing. We've listened to people for years saying, if you want to find Hanford, drive down 41 and you can smell cow poop and you turn left. I don't want it to be to where whenever you're driving into Hanford, look for the homeless place or all the homeless people right there on the freeway. And that's where we are. I know that you guys are doing the other development between 11th and 12th and I understand that. But to take and build a homeless shelter right next to a brand-new hotel is hurting his business, it's hurting the car dealerships there. It's going to create a lot more crime and things. It's going to hurt Walmart. We'll probably, if you guys, if it's gone forward, I can see a year or two from now Walmart being out, okay? Because it's going to take and centralize more problems there. You're going to have problems with people crossing 12th Avenue and causing traffic accidents. There will be vandalism to the cars and everything else, but it's being done non-transparent. None of the businesses out there are aware of what's going on. It's under contract with community action. It's all being handled very kind of secretive. And I just feel like we dealt with the problem that we had with the North Star Project that was handled bad. And I feel like taking and slipping this through underneath the rug to where nobody knows, the public doesn't know about it. I mean, you've got somebody right here who has a business right there that that will take and destroy its business. The 18-plus million dollars that he's putting into that building to take and build it, it'll destroy it. You guys need to take and help us, help us, you know, in a sense, make choices that help us all. I mean, I have been fortunate to take and join a group of gentlemen called 1776 and the John Birch Society. And through them, I have taken and enabled myself to have a little bit more power to stand up for what we need to take and do. And you guys need to take and listen to us all and help us, okay? Because we just, we need your help, okay? To take and make decisions that are beneficial for us. There are other locations that are available. I approached Jeff about another location that's available. That makes so much more sense and it's in a situation to where it will work. If anybody wants to reach out to me, I'm sure you guys all know who I am and you guys can all call me and I'll be happy to take and help you and I'll be happy to show it to you. But I mean, it just makes more sense to take and make good choices that benefit our future and more importantly, my grandkids, okay? Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Randell Harper.
Good morning.
Good morning, Supervisors. Randell Harper, I do live here in Kings County, have for 23 years. I'm also Attorney for here within the county at the minors advocates office. Been employed for 11 years. I know you got written correspondence. I am not here today to give that to you again. I just am here back in the county in person, so I wanted to come in person and tell you thank you for taking that correspondence from me and taking into consideration my request to the board of supervisors. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the cards I have. I don't believe anybody online has their hand raised.
Okay, anybody else want to come forward at this time? Now's the time to do so. Seeing none, we'll close unscheduled appearances and we'll go to item four, approval of the minutes. And number A is report out of closed session from regular meeting on July 11th, 2023.
Thank you, the board took no reportable action, so there's nothing to report out.
Thank you. Item B is approval of the minutes from regular meeting from July 11th, 2023. Moved by Supervisor Fagundes, second by Supervisor Robinson. Madam Court, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson, Richard Fagundes.
Four in favor, one absent, and it has been approved. Move on now to consent counter. Any item on a consent counter can be pulled by Commissioner if they choose so. If not, we'll all take a motion. Moved by Supervisor Fagundes, second by Supervisor Robinson. Madam Court, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Consent counter has been approved and passed, so we'll move on now to item six, regular gen item. And we have administration and we have Bob Henry from Chemical Waste Management. Good morning, Bob.
Morning.
How are you today?
Great. How about you?
Good. Orderly report of activities for the Chemical Waste Management Kettleman Hills Facility. Report period covers from April 11th through July 17th. Got a few events or a few things to discuss. Past events, April 13th, CWMI, KHF resubmitted to DTSC the entire Part B permit package, okay? May not sound like a lot, but the Part B permit package is our 10-year operating permit. We've been going through, so if you guys get the timeline, 2003 it was issued, expired in 2013. From 2013 till today, we've been resubmitting permit, renewal of it. And what has transpired is we've had to do revision after revision after revision. And then back in April, finally, I think we've reached agreement with DTSC. We submitted an entire new permit. It's not like it's one three-inch binder, it's like a bookshelf. Okay? And with that, you have closure plans, you have your waste analysis plan, you have all these different plans that you have for the operation of the facility. Anyway, we resubmitted everything and on April 13th, when I get to the end of the report, I'll tell you what the timeline is for actually seeing that document hopefully get approved. April 19th, San Juanquin Valley Air Pollution Control District at KHF, scheduled annual facility inspection, no violations, no area of concern. April 19th, we also had Kings County Environmental Health Services at the facility, monthly unannounced inspection of MSW landfill B17, hazardous landfill B18, and then MSW landfill B19, which is under a delay of closure. During the inspection by Kings County, no violations, no area of concern. It was a heck of a week that week. April 20th, DTSC at KHF, unannounced comprehensive environmental inspection, or CEI. I may have called it in the past. We had three DTSC inspectors out of the Clovis Office inspected the entire facility during their inspection. No violations, no area of concerns. Getting the theme? Okay. May 4th, Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board at KHF, scheduled annual facility inspection, no violations, no area of concern. May 9th, KHF's eighth annual community meeting. This was a Zoom meeting and this came out of with the permit for B18 Phase III construction. This was one of the considerations or permit conditions placed upon us by this board and then by DTSC is to have the community meeting. This was one of the considerations or regular permit conditions placed upon us by this board and then by D T S C is to have the community meeting. I merged what you guys asked for, I merged what D T S C asked for into one meeting. At the meeting, discussion items provided by C W I, C W M I included site-specific ambient air monitoring program. Our environmental manager, Raina Purdean, presented that one. Site-specific groundwater monitoring program, Raina presented that one. Contingency plan, I presented, and then placarding, our other environmental manager, Jennifer Hobbs, presented. Then discussion items by Kings County Office of Emergency Services included family emergency preparedness, and that was by Abraham Valencia. So you guys helped present that one as well. May twelfth, Kings County Environmental Health Services back out at K H F, no violations, no area of concern. May thirty-first, San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District at K H F, scheduled flare emissions testing. So for the M S W landfill, we do have a flare with an M S W landfill. You're going to generate methane gas with the decomposition of the trash that's in the landfill, the organic matter in the landfill. So we draw that methane out and right now it's being flared off, okay? So what they do is that we have somebody come out, they'll run a test on the emissions of the flare, and it's overseen by San Joaquin Valley A P C D. During the flare testing, there were no violations, no area of concerns. June twentieth, Kings County Environmental Health Services back out, monthly unannounced inspection, no violations, no area of concern. So those are my past items. Future activities, July twenty-fourth, landfill unit B seventeen, that's the M S W landfill. It was designed in six phases, A, B, C, A one, A two, B one, B two. So far, we've constructed A one, A two, B one, B two, and we're getting ready to construct C one, starting on July twenty-fourth. And then also at the same time, because we have to excavate soil, what have you, to build perimeter berms, things like that, we're also going to be closing landfill unit B nineteen, which was the first M S W landfill we had for Kings County. Okay? So that one will be getting closed. We'll put the cover cap on B nineteen. And at the same time, we'll build a buttress berms and the liner system and things like that for C, landfill unit B seventeen, A C. All right, back to permitting. So you got all those permits. Everything's been turned in back earlier this year in April. Tentative schedule right now for our part B permit renewal. D T S C to complete their technical review in fourth quarter of this year. So all the documents that have been submitted, they've reviewed, but then they'll have to come up and sign off saying technically it's fine, okay? D T S C to make a draft permit decision in first quarter of twenty-four. D T S C to go out for public comment in first quarter of twenty-four. Most likely to hold a public hearing in second quarter of twenty-four. Okay, so draft decision on that technique, have the technical document, approve it, being technically fit. Then they'll go out, make a draft decision saying, yes, we agree with everything. Then they'll go out for public comment, public hearing. Then after they get all that, they'll answer all the questions they received, hopefully make a final permit decision in third quarter of twenty-four. That can then be appealed, okay? They'll have thirty days to appeal it. And then that would, if there's a different process now, it would go back to the D T S C board, okay? Or they have a new board now for D T S C. It's not going back to the director. It would go to the board. And then the appeal decision hopefully would be done fourth quarter of twenty-four. So right now I'm sitting on about another year and a half before I think we'll get our new permit. And that would be a ten-year permit and we would hopefully get it renewed within ten years. So.
Good luck with that.
What's that?
Good luck with that. But you have, you've done everything correct. No cause, no concern, no change, nothing. But they go to the public and they can bring up issues that they've never been out there, they don't know what's going on, but they can make you lose your permit from issues that they may bring up in their head, correct?
I would challenge it.
Yeah, I know, but it would.
Public, so, excuse me, so the the permit would go out, D T S C would say, all right, we make a draft permit decision. They approve it, but needs to go out for public comment. Public has an opportunity to comment on it. They would. I've never had a permit yet not get commented upon. I've not had a permit yet that doesn't get appealed. So I'm expecting both those to trend, you know, to happen. And when it does get appealed, then it'll have to have a technical merit to it. That's why you go through the technical review. It's appropriate, but there may be something else that comes up. Maybe I'm not aware of it, maybe the state wasn't aware of it, somebody comes up with a great idea. I welcome it, real. Tell me if you got something better I need to do and I'll do it. We do that, we go forward and we make a change or two to the permit maybe, and then hopefully it gets approved.
So in this tenure process, so can you operate in the meantime?
Yes.
Okay. And if B nineteen is not closed yet, you're still waiting for approval to do the complete closure of that one?
It was under delay closure. We've already contacted, that one's an M S W, so we already talked to Kings County. We already talked to the water board, Cal Recycle, and they know that that one's going to be, start the closure on B nineteen. It's full, so we're ready to close B nineteen for M S W.
And then you dig C one.
C one for B seventeen, landfill B seventeen.
We dig the dirt out of C one and put on top of B nineteen?
Correct. Yep. It's about, it's just shy of a million yards I gotta move, so.
Very good.
All right. So you have that, so you have B nineteen closing, B seventeen, A C one being developed this year. And then hopefully, first part of the next year, we'll have our part B permit going through the motion. Been a long time.
Will you be here in twenty thirty-three for the next time? So then my next question will be.
Successor.
To have a succession plan to replace you.
I do have a young lady that I'm visiting rather well.
Because it seems like it takes a lot of patience and calmness to get through this, so hopefully we have someone that can replace you in this time that can just carry on as need be.
She's a very good young lady, very proud of her. Other than where she went to school, no. She didn't go to where I went, so.
That's fine.
She's a UCLA kid, so. She's good.
Any question or comment for Bob? Okay, well, thank you.
Very good, thanks.
Thank you. Need a motion to accept. Moved by Supervisor Robinson, second by Supervisor Nevs. Madam Court, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
It has passed, Bob. You're free to go. Okay, we'll move on now to Department of Finance. Morning Eric.
Morning.
How are you doing today?
So I'm here today to ask you to award and approve a contract for external audit services for the county to Moss Adams L L P. Contract will cover three years, fiscal year twenty-two, fiscal year twenty-three, and twenty-four, with three optional years after that, if everything works out great. There are eight separate engagements that are part of this contract, but the first year, which is fiscal year twenty-two, is only going to include two of those. That's the countywide audit and the federal's single audit. That's going to come in at about a hundred and five thousand, which I have to note, there's a typo on the board agenda. I believe it had ninety-five thousand. It's actually one oh five. And then for the two full years of engagements for twenty-three and twenty-four, it's actually hundred and ninety-six thousand. So it kind of nets out to like a thousand. So I just wanted to note that, just in case you guys noticed there was a difference. So the first, the first year is just going to be those two engagements, and that's because a previous audit firm was my audit firm. So as soon as I started, you know, in discussions with coming to the county, independence was breached, so we had to stop that, all the work there. So this contract's going to tidy up twenty-two, finish that out. For twenty-three and twenty-four, like I mentioned, it's going to be audit engagements, which includes countywide audit, federal single audit, first five commission, the T D A audits, which includes two county audits and four of the cities, treasury oversight, five cash counts, so one per quarter and then a year end. We have the D A programs, which they typically range two to three grants a year that, you know, like Bawa and C A C. And then insurance audits, which is the auto insurance fraud and the workers' comp. So for fiscal year, we actually issued two different R F Ps for this one and sent out the R F P to ten separate audit firms. We ended up getting three responses. Two of them were incomplete, so we're kind of left with Moss Adams. However, I don't want to make it sound like it's something we're stuck with Moss Adams as a national firm. They have a lot of experience doing the county audits. And, you know, when we extrapolate out the incomplete R F Ps that we receive, the price is still comparable across all three. They are, like I mentioned, a national firm. They do both state and federal audits for cities, counties, state agencies, public employee, employee retirement systems and transit agencies. So I'm confident in their skills. I've heard about them, you know, they kind of moved into Fresno not too long ago, about a year or two ago, so I'm confident in them. But yeah, lastly, the agreement has been reviewed and approved by council. Are any questions?
Eric, any question or comments for Eric? Any question or comments for Eric?
There are no questions or comments. Mr. Chairman, move production as presented.
Moved by Supervisor Nevs, second by Supervisor Fagundes. Madam Court, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
It is passed, four in favor. Thank you, Eric. Big four and a half month on the job, Andy's got a lot to do. Okay, we're going to go on now to Public Health. Heather, good morning.
Hi, good morning, Vice Chairman, members of the board, Heather Silva with Public Health. I just wanted to introduce our, one of our program managers, Nicholas Montoya, who will be discussing the agreement with the San Joaquin.
Morning.
Morning. Good morning, members of the board, Nicholas Montoya, Public Health. This morning, Kings County Department of Public Health is seeking your board's authorization to approve the funding agreement with Santa Rosa Rancharia Tachyoka Tribe. In nineteen thirty-four, the Santa Rosa Rancharia was established in La Mora as a home for approximately two hundred Tachyoka individuals. In nineteen ninety-four, the Tachyoka people obtained federal recognition, recognition, making an important milestone for the tribe. To this day, the tribe remains dedicated to safeguard their culture and customs while striving to enhance the well-being of their members and future generations to come. The partnership between Kings County Department of Public Health and the tribe will promote and improve the well-being of the residents of the Tachyoka community by providing health education, outreach and engagement, as well as referrals and linkages to services promoting health outcomes to the Tachyoka community. This agreement will allow the tribe to hire a staff member under their education department to serve as the health educator and liaison with Kings County Department of Public Health with the goal of becoming a trusted individual within their community. Outcomes for the agreement include community engagement measured by the health educator meeting with the majority of the tribe's households, conducting community outreach events, and screening and linking to services to improve their overall health outcomes. Kings County Department of Public Health will provide the tribe funding available through the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, Epidemiology and Laboratory Capacity Enhancement Detection Expansion Grant, approved by the board in September fifteenth, twenty twenty. The maximum cost of the recommended agreement will be a hundred and twenty-four thousand over a twelve-month term commencing upon approval by your board and ending on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. K C D P H will oversee the agreement to ensure the provided contract services meet established benchmarks, as well as the needs of Kings County and its local tribe. The department is requesting your board to approve the funding agreement with the Tachyoka tribe and adopt the budget change requirement for fifth vote. This concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions. I also have the representative from the tribe, Danny Amos, the education director here today to answer any additional questions for you.
Well, thank you very much. Any question or comments? We have a hand up on Zoom from Cal. Cal, do you have a question?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, very fine.
Very good. Well, two things. One is I didn't see the underlying documents online. I was having a hard time finding them. Do you only post a summary? Agenda?
We've posted full packet, and please state your name and address for the record as well.
Yeah, my name's Cal. And so the question I have is, as an investor in real estate over there, and the amount of vaccine injuries that are going up, shouldn't there be in this packet a ten-day waiting period before for disclosures to parents so that the parents will know if if the ingredients might have a conflict with the health of the people? So that's a question for your, for your tribe, or for the public health officer. Can that public health officer please answer that?
Yeah, Heather, do you have an answer for that?
Restate that question.
So, so this promotes a bunch of vaccines among that group of people.
So this agreement is just for the health education piece with the tribe?
Just the education? Okay. So does it promote, does it promote the vaccination programs from the state?
It promotes all immunizations and vaccines for any community of that tribe, yes.
It does. Thank you for putting that on the record. Yes, so the disclosures are not adequate for parents to know whether or not their education is being slanted. Certainly, Dr. Pan admitted injuries went up a million children the first year of Senate Bill two seven seven, where parents' religious and personal beliefs were taken from them by the state, and then the counties followed suit, and then Senate Bill two seven six took away medical exemptions. So are there disclosures in the packet that say to parents, if you choose to vaccinate your child, that injuries have gone up?
Good morning. This is Rosemary Rannan, the Director of Public Health. So with this agreement, it is about health education, so immunizations may be encouraged. However, we're not providing the immunizations as a part of this agreement.
Understood.
If they, any resident of the community presents to a clinical site for a vaccination, they are given health information and all the facts about vaccinations and all the research. So I hear what you're saying.
Okay.
However, this agreement is specifically.
So that, thank you, but that, thank you, but that brings up the question of data reporting on vaccine injuries. Is there a countywide vaccine injury reporting?
Yes, there is.
Okay.
It's statewide and through the CDC, we report all vaccination.
Is there a county, is there a county vaccine injury reporting system?
There is a system for all providers to report any adverse effects of vaccinations.
Okay. And what is your take on the injuries? Because if that's not disclosed to parents who are being educated about the injuries, then they're likely to go ahead and get their vaccinations to their children, where Dr. Pan admitted injuries went up seventeen percent, over a million children the first year. So are you reporting the full disclosure on the injuries with including the VAERS reports?
Hey, Cal, hang on a second. We have an attorney wants to have.
Mr. Vice Chair, I would interject at this time and say we're getting off the topic that of the agenda that has been posted.
If you're educating on vaccines and you're not disclosing, then you're liable as a county for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to add that this agreement, this funding agreement empowers the local tribe to educate themselves and to choose the topics that they feel that are necessary in accordance with the department. And so this position that is going to be created is for the local tribe only.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for clarification. Any more questions or comments? Moved by Supervisor Fagundes, second by Supervisor Nevs. Madam Court, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson. Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Four in favor. It is passed. Thank you very much.
Good job, Danny.
Okay, so we'll move on to Human Resources Department. Carolyn Leest.
I'm Carolyn. Hi, this is Carolyn Leest, Human Resources Director. I am here today to correct an item that was approved last week. On Tuesday, July eleventh, the board approved several agenda items that were based on negotiations. They were MOUs and sign letters, as well as an updated salary resolution to reflect some of the management benefits that were approved. H R was in active negotiations with all units at that time. The salary resolution was drafted with hopes that we would reach agreements with all the bargaining units. We included adjustments of all those units. However, we are still actively negotiating with Deputy Sheriff's Association, Firefighters Association, and Detentions Deputies Association. So to be clear and transparent, the salary resolution brought before the Board of Supervisors on July eleventh, twenty twenty-three showed a two-point-oh salary adjustment for the Deputy Sheriff's Association, Firefighters Association, and Detentions Deputies Association, which is not the case. These bargaining groups are still in active negotiations. There was also an error in the formula of the strikeout version of the resolution for the general and supervisors unit in the column. the general and supervisors unit in the column reflecting the fourth year of the contract. So when we did the fourth year, we took the front load from the fourth year and put it into the third year, but there was still a formula of a plus-one in the Excel spreadsheet of the agenda, or of the salary resolution, show it appears like we took a one percent away when it was just a float over, and so that has been corrected in this version as well. All other changes to the resolution presented on July eleventh, twenty twenty-three are correct and reflected in the corrected salary resolution. The corrected salary resolution is attached with all additions and corrections highlighted in red and underlined, and deletions marked with a strike-through. The errors in the salary resolution were not approved, and therefore, there is no fiscal impact to the correction of the salary resolution. If there's any questions or concerns, I'd be happy to address them.
Thank you, Carolyn. Any questions or concerns? Just presented.
Move is corrected.
It's chair. Moved by supervisor Neves, second by supervisor Fagundes, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Neves?
Yes.
Doug Verboen?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Thank you, more in favor, it has passed.
Thank you.
Thank you for your help. Okay, we'll move on now to board member announcement of the report, and we'll start with supervisor Robinson.
Okay, let's see, last Wednesday, I attended the R C R C meeting in Sacramento, and we had Cal Fires Chief of California speak to us, and also the Secretary of the E P A, California Secretary of the E P A. The chief continues to push for a five-foot clearing around houses that are, they're in rural areas and that are prone to fires. Also, fireproofing your house, which involves a few steps, but namely replacing roofs, siding, windows, things of that nature. And then there's a whole list on the, on the California site to show of, of things that don't cost much money. They're saying on average, a lot of the changes take about forty thousand dollars, but, but then there's a whole host of other measures you can take that, that don't cost much at all. So, and then also, they just updated us on, on where R C R C is on a bunch of the legislative Let's see, last, oh, let's see, last Thursday, I had the honor of emceeing the Chamber of Commerce Public Safety Appreciation Luncheon. So congratulations to all thirteen award recipients, we are grateful to you, and, and it was truly an honor. Yesterday, attended the Board of Equalization's Annual Report with everyone, and the assessor detailed her twenty-three, twenty-four tax rule. Also yesterday, attended the Kings Talaria Area Agency on Aging, which we, we call K T triple A. We approved Medicare improvements, contracted with several authorities for the twenty-three, twenty-four year. We also appointed another advisory member, and all, well, almost all of the senior centers are now open. And one of the things they're, they're experimenting with and having great success is bingo and exercise. I asked the logistics of that, they weren't exactly sure, but the centers that are having that, the seniors are loving it. So that's it for my week.
Thank you. Vice Fagundes. I'm good. You good? Good, thank you.
You want a second opinion?
Yeah.
Yes.
Please be informed.
You're very good.
Yeah. Whoa, I got out of that one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, continue being engaged with the Tulare Lake water issues. On July thirteenth, also attended the Public Safety Luncheon honoring all the first responders. The blood drive that took place on this campus on July thirteenth collected forty-three units of blood. The blood supply is down very low, so if you are capable of donating, this would be a great time to donate again. The pint-for-pint campaign starts at the end of the month. So you get a, for a pint of blood, you get a pint of ice cream. The South Fork Kings G S A meeting held on the thirteenth also had to be delayed on the two eighteen election because of a lack of posting of the public hearing on the agenda. So that election process has been extended two weeks and will take place on July twenty-seventh. On Saturday, July fifteenth, participated in the Walk with a Doc program. This is a nationwide program, and the city of Hanford and the Adventist Health have teamed up, and once a month, you have an opportunity to walk with one of the local doctors, and this happened to be Dr. Ewing's time at Freedom Park, and so it was a nice hour-long visit and around walking, as you're walking the track.
If you want.
Correct, three laps. Yeah. And so the August one, because of the heat, will be moved to the Hanford Mall, not a hundred percent sure where it will be at, but it, they ask you to get there about eight-thirty and register, and then you walk about an hour. And different doctors, this has been going on since March, and this was the first time I'd heard about it, and different doctors talking about different areas of education and, and the healthcare industry, so.
Very good.
With that, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Hopefully it'll be inside when they walk in August.
On, you know, it was kind of warm, but it wasn't really too bad, we were done by ten o'clock, so it wasn't too bad, and Freedom Park is a very nice park, a nice walking park in that area, and, but inside the Hanford Mall probably would be pretty good too for August and September, so.
Did you make the three laps?
Yeah, I did my three laps.
Three.
Three. And that was, I probably could have made one more within the hour. It's about five thousand steps, so that, that track's not as long as I thought it was. I thought maybe, I thought maybe, because one of the ladies that was there when we got there and I was talking to, she said four laps was too mild, but there's no way. So it was, it's probably closer to a mile and a half, mile.
Very good.
Thanks.
Last Thursday, we had a twenty-five-year employee retire, Jay Syer, retired from Economic Development Corporation, went to his retirement party at noon. It was a surprise, we did have a Kings County official leak that to him during the blood draw, so he wasn't a surprise that he should have been. I'm curious.
Unfortunately, said too much.
But it was all good, he was, he'll be missed in the future, twenty-five years is a great asset to the county, and although we're not really sure what he does, but he did, he did bring new businesses to the county with economic development and promote our county outside our area, so I believe our replacement will be just as good or better than he is. Should be announced his name soon, right? It's, we'll get this here, so. That's all I have, and then we'll go on now to closed session, Conference of Labor Negotiator, Meet and Confer, Government Code Section five four nine five seven point six, negotiator Terry Martinez, Carolyn Leece, Shay Johnson of Liberty Cassidy Whitmore, General Unit Clocia, supervisor Unit Clocia, Blue Collar S C I U, Petition Deputies Association, Firefighters' Association, Deputy Sheriff's Association, Probation Officers Association, Prosecutors' Association, and Unrepresented Amendment, and at that point, we'll adjourn, and we'll, next meeting will be next Tuesday, July twenty-fifth at nine a.m. Thank you all for coming.
Mr. Vice Chair, we miss board correspondence, but I'm okay with foregoing.